Cool. Good evening, everyone. This is the Planning Board meeting of March 25th, 2021. I'm gonna start with the roll call. Mr. Phil Nemec.
Present.
Mark Cunningham.
Present.
Louis Campagna.
Present.
Jim Bonanno is here. So we're gonna start with approving meeting minutes, subject to Phil's comments. So we've all read them, and Phil has more than read that, read them. And so I'm gonna make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of February 25th, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So a quick update to the viewing audience. There's two applications that are adjourned and aren't gonna be on, are not on the agenda tonight. The first one is 19-42 5 Ray Place, and the second one is 20-19 189 Brook Street Kids Corner. That being said, I'm just gonna give some instructions on how we're gonna run the public hearing. The first thing is, all applications have been noticed as public hearings. And then if the public has any comments or would like to make a comment after the hearing has been open, please use the raise feature on Zoom or a star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mr. Tedesco will acknowledge you and invite you to speak. Please unmute your microphone, because we always forget to do that, and state your name and address. So if everyone's here, we'll get started. The first application is an open application. It's 20-37 ICC Arch Care 265 White Plains Road.
Okay, let me just get everyone on board here. I think that's everybody.
Think so. So, good evening. Be back here tonight, as you see, with Father Sorgi in person, front and center. Saki on?
Yeah, no, I don't see them on the list here.
Oh, alright. Well, we've got Fred Munt and William Schneider from PSNS, who will be dealing with most of the issues tonight on the site plan issue. So, my name, as you know, Michael Zarin, Chairman and members of the Board, represent the Arch Care and the Parish Immaculate Conception assumption about lady in connection with their joint application to rehabilitate the parish's former convent building and provide 10 residential units for high-functioning individuals with autism, mostly from the community. In fact, Father Sorgi was telling me the other day that there's been a real, as people have watched these proceedings, he's been contacted by a lot of people who are very excited, who, you know, have children or, or young adults who, in the community, who are waiting to sign up and take advantage of this. And, you know, these type of things, all of a sudden, people you never knew about, and families and neighbors, you know, have individuals that could use such a facility. So, we were before you, the last meeting, February 25th. Since then, we've received two additional comment letters, one from Kellid Session and one from Mazor Consulting, repeating a couple of the other ones that we had not addressed as of yet, plus there were a couple of other items to, to address. We've been working with them since talking, meeting, had a very productive Zoom call going over the items. And we think we've covered most of the items, if not, you know, close to all of them. There may be a couple that we hope have been discussed and, and collaborated upon that will be just added as hopefully conditions. But what I'd like to do at this time is turn this over to Fred Munt, civil engineer from PSNS, who can just walk quickly through some of the issues, maybe starting with Phil Greeley's issues that he raised in his memo, and then, and then to Joe's. And please, you know, interrupt and ask questions as, as we go.
And Saki just joined you.
Hello, Si. Well, okay, so Fred, do you wanna share your screen or with the plans?
Yeah, absolutely. I can do that, Michael. Thank you for that. And good evening, members of the Board. Give me one second to get this up. Okay, just please let me know if everybody has seen my screen, okay?
Yes.
Okay, so as Michael said, we will just kind of run down the list of the comments that we've received at this point and coordinated with Mr. Greeley and Mr. Tramelli from last month's hearing. Looking at Mr. Greeley's memo, the first comment, we've addressed by adding some notes to the plans relative to vegetative trimming along the driveway entrance and along Midland Ave. Comment number two is relative to the turning tracks for the vehicles, mainly fire trucks, pedestrian, vehicular cars, and garbage trucks coming in and out of the site. So we have prepared a few exhibits that we have provided to Mr. Greeley, Mr. Tramelli, and also Captain Pintavell to evaluate vehicles coming in and out of the site. And then the third comment is relative to pedestrian and vehicular traffic throughout the site, namely in the driveway. So I wanted to turn to two different plans here. One was an exhibit that we first prepared in order to demonstrate that most of the pedestrian traffic from the site, from the building itself, would mostly be geared towards, heading back towards Winter Hill Road, towards the bus stop off of White Plains Road, and also back towards the center of the ICC campus itself. We would expect at this time that there would be minimal pedestrian traffic going down the new driveway improvements up on the north end of the site towards Midland Ave, if we zoom in a little bit. With that being said, that the primary pedestrian pathway will be more towards the south, back on towards the campus. We have taken a look, per some of the engineers and the Board's request, to evaluate a sidewalk that would go along the north end of the driveway, down towards Midland Ave, in the off-chance that there is any pedestrian activity and traffic that moves down towards Midland Ave, which you can see on the plans here. So should that be the Board's discretion to request that? We've been working with the engineers to evaluate that at this time.
And if, if, if requested, we're, we're prepared to do that. I should just jump in and add the, the pathways that Fred just pointed out in the other slide, those are all existing sidewalk and existing existing areas. So that's where we think most people will go, because that's where the bus stops are. But we are prepared to construct and add that sidewalk as shown, if that's the Board's desire and staff.
You should go back to the pedestrian, the red pedestrian pathway that you had. I just wanna sort of trace it. So, so you come out there, go behind the gym, oh, you walk up the stairs, go that way, out to North White Plains. Okay?
Yeah, there's the bus stop, you know.
Over there, so you're... Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, this is Phil Nemec. I, I thought that there was a statement at the last meeting that there was a bus stop at Midland Avenue. Was that, am I misremembering that? Or is there, in fact, a, a bus, a bus stop at, at Midland Avenue?
Not, I don't believe.
I, I just reread the transcript today, so I remember being surprised, because it's not a very trafficked area. But, but, but you're telling me that the nearest bus stop is, is up on Winter Hill Road closer to Route 22? Is that right?
Yeah, that's our understanding, yes.
Winter Hill Road and White Plains Road. Nice big bus stop.
Yep.
Yeah, right at the top of the hill.
All the time.
Okay.
And you can also see on this chart, just what Fred mentioned before, that the markings about with trimmings will be in the site distance analysis we did, and that all that will be added on to the final site plans.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So moving on to the comments that we received from Mr. Tramelli. The first one was related, if we flip back to the site plan here, was relative to the new retaining wall that would be extended towards the, towards Midland Ave along the driveway here. And what we looked to do here was actually turn the retaining wall a little bit, so it stays outside of the right-of-way and doesn't encroach onto Midland Ave. The other thing I will point out here, in our conversations with both Mr. Tramelli and Captain Pintavell, we actually looked to increase the distance between the driveway and the retaining wall here to help aid any fire vehicles and emergency vehicles turning into the site.
I should mention, we've provided the captain, he gave us the specs for three vehicles, and we provided them with turning radii, turning radii analysis to, to show, and that's, that's where the comment came back, requiring a little more, if we could give them a little comfort in that, that. So I think we satisfied it.
So the second comment, relative to Mr. Tramelli's letter, had to deal with the grades along the driveway here, as we approached the high point of the drive and then head back down towards the building. And the intent of the plans here was to maintain the existing grades along that driveway as closely as possible, while attempting to provide a little bit more of a flatter landing area here at the driveway entrance as vehicles approach Midland Ave and approach the site. So we have been working with Mr. Tramelli and also Captain Pintavell on that to just take a look at the vertical curves and make sure that we don't foresee any concerns with fire trucks coming in and out of the site. So we are continuing to work with them to address that. And any final modifications that would be needed to address those concerns would be minor at this point. The other thing that we wanted to point out in conversations with Captain Pintavell was that the existing gymnasium that was constructed about 10 years ago up here has a fire department connection off of the back corner. So we've been working with him to ensure that there will always be access, and that that fire department connection will never be hidden at this time. And that vegetation will be clear in this area as well.
And we went out and took photographs of that and, and were able to demonstrate. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. I was actually out there today and was able to pass along a photo to Captain Pintavelli.
Is there a difference in elevation between where that is and where you are? Like, how do you get to that?
It's, there's a pretty gentle slope here, I would say. It's about, yeah, maybe one to two feet.
Okay, got it.
And then the third comment in the memo, again, ties back to the one that we received from Mr. Greeley relative to pedestrian access back down to Midland Ave, which was demonstrated by the sidewalk here. Should that be the, the Board's decision to move forward with?
Fred?
Yes?
I just wanted to, can, can you scroll down a little bit to show, because I, I know you're saying that pedestrian, or actually the other way, to show what's north of the site, because, oh, it's not on this map. Because I know you're saying the majority of people will walk towards the bus stop, but there are an awful lot of commercial uses and pretty easy walking distance just north of the site. So I, I would imagine that residents, you know, if they wanted to go to a, a deli or the hardware store or something, there's quite a few areas where I could see people, residents really would walk to the north. I was just gonna point that out.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I agree. I think even, even a short trip into the village of Toccoho as well. You know, I think this approach to the village is probably better than actually walking uphill to, you know, to the stairs at the front of the church and then walking back down Winter Hill. So I think that, that walkway certainly warrants it.
And we also have bollards lighting along it. So we're, we're, you know, if that's, if that's the case, like I said before, we're prepared to, to build this.
And it is very possible that some of these residents can work and go to Manhattan and to schools. So that eight-minute walk to the MTA that I do myself would be on that same walkway.
Okay.
Going out that way to the Toccoho train station.
Good.
Back to you.
Fred?
Okay, so moving forward, the fourth comment was relative to some bulk zoning information that was previously shown on, I believe, the cover sheet. And we've added some additional information on the site plan to show both the typical 50-yard, sorry, 50-foot front yard setback, as well as a larger-scale map of the entire property, showing the relationship of the building to some of the other surrounding roads and property lines. With the fifth comment, relative to the highway department details that'll be used for any of the improvements that are made up near Midland Ave, including the, any pavement work, any curb work, and sidewalk and driveway work. We are actively coordinating with Mr. Letella to coordinate those details and get those on the plans prior to building permit issuance and submission. The next comment also is relative to the building permit submission that will be upcoming, in terms of additional details provided for the retaining walls and the design of these retaining walls along the site, especially the ones greater than four feet. And these details and design will also touch on the fact that there is a sanitary sewer that runs, I believe it's about five or six feet behind the retaining wall, and how that will be protected during time of construction for those walls.
Where's the tallest part of the retaining wall?
tallest part of the retaining wall, I believe, is roughly up here in this corner.
Can I see you have a fence indicated for the top of the wall somewhere?
Correct, yes. So the next few comments in the letter are all geared towards the, both the existing and the proposed infiltration systems on-site. There is an existing infiltration basin, and actually, let me switch plans real quick to show our proposed conditions as well. There is an existing infiltration basin that actually sits at the top of the existing driveway currently. At this point in time, we are working on coordinating with the previous civil engineer on the gymnasium project to really determine all of the details of that infiltration system, in terms of its depth, its true footprint, and more. So that way, this can be accurately referenced and protected during construction. At the same time, there was initially a request to evaluate the condition of this existing infiltration basin. At this time, we are no longer providing any additional runoff to that basin. Everything is going to be brought back into our proposed system. So we feel that there's no need to provide any further investigation of that system at this time. We were also out on-site over the past two days with the geotechnical engineer, and there was a representative from Kellid Sessions there today as well to witness soil percolation tests, as requested for our proposed infiltration system, as well as some test pit excavations, just to determine things like groundwater bedrock, et cetera. The percolation tests actually went very, very well. The, the preliminary results we've received show that the soils underneath are actually even more permissible than the original design for this basin, which helps a lot of the calculations that were prepared. There were certainly some rocks discovered in this area. As you can see on the plan, there are certain areas on the survey that are indicated as rock-out crops. So we're evaluating those a little bit more in the report that's being prepared, so we can make sure that that does not become an issue during construction. And then with that being said, with the new percolation data that we should be receiving shortly, we are going to work with Mr. Tramelli and the Kellid Sessions team to update our calculations for our proposed stormwater system as necessary. And the final two comments are relative to the retaining walls on-site, particularly the one closest to Midland Ave. We have a footing detail for any groundwater drainage associated with those retaining walls, as well as a small swale that will sit at the top of the retaining wall to capture any runoff from the hill up here next to the gymnasium, so that not everything goes spilling out over the wall. And we are currently working with Mr. Tramelli to reevaluate the drainage design a little bit to try to bring in as much of that runoff as we can back into our own system, which will help decrease the amount of runoff that gets ultimately into the driveway and into Midland Ave, which would improve on the current condition of the site.
So they...
Go ahead.
Are they gravity retaining walls? What kind of walls are they?
Yes, they're gravity retaining walls, modular block systems.
Okay, cool. And they have footings on those?
Yes, that's correct. They're buried usually one to one and a half courses underground.
Thank you. You were saying, Mr. Zarin?
That, that concludes our response to the outstanding issues and further questions, and we would hope that we can get approvals tonight, obviously, if there are with any, the appropriate conditions.
Sure, let's go through a few more steps, and then we'll, we'll get to that. Any questions from us, guys? I think it was very well presented. Thank you, Mr. Munt. You guys have been very thorough, and Margaret has said how, how closely you've all worked together, so it's appreciated. Because we're all here to get the same result. So...
Feelings are the same. Thanks. Great staff.
So if we don't have any questions, I think we're gonna just hear from our consultants. And we'll start with Mr. Greeley, if he's available.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I think Fred has done a good synopsis of, of our comments. Well, what remains in terms of conditions of approvals, the sightline diagram that was provided, and making sure that that is kept clear going forward would be a recommended condition of approval. We had concerns about the pedestrian movements out to Midland, you know, with, with the commercial facilities up on Main Street and what was just kind of rehashed. We, we felt that there would be some pedestrian activity, and that needed to be accounted for in terms of some treatment. I think their plan as presented is probably the best treatment. We had an alternate, if there were, you know, any physical constraints, or if it was gonna mean more retaining walls. We had an alternate, but I think this is, is the best plan. And they've addressed all of our other comments that we've had through the process, and I think those would be just, you know, decisions the Board needs to make in conditions of approval.
Sure. Yeah, I like the sidewalk, because you're, I think you made a comment about the striping on the driveway and, and I sort of like having the sidewalk. Is there, by the way, Mr. Munt, is there lighting along the sidewalk?
Yes, there is. The lighting is actually primarily on the south side. I can run down through the...
Sorry, sorry, Phil. I just wanted to ask before I forget.
Sorry, give me one second here.
Very interactive.
Actually moving pretty fast.
And Phil, just to be clear, your preferred solution to the pedestrian is the sidewalk? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Just wanna make sure of that. Alright.
I apologize, this is just taking a while to load. But we do, along the south end of the road here, we have pole-mounted lights. And, and one of the items that we are evaluating as well is if there may be, you know, ideal placement of maybe a bollard or two along the north end here.
Okay. That's, that's sufficient, we believe, yeah. Did you have anything else, Mr. Greeley, to...
No, that was pretty much it, unless the Board had any questions.
I think Margaret and I talked about the pedestrians that get to the, we talked about it this morning, that get to the end and want to, want to cross Midland. And I think if you make it right, there's a crosswalk across Midland right there.
That's correct.
On the picture here, but, or is it on the picture on the screen?
Yeah, just, just off of there, there's a crosswalk across Midland that brings you over towards Main Street, you know, either side of Main Street there.
Right, so you're not crossing across Midland. Once you get to the end, you're gonna make a right
Correct.
And cross at that crosswalk that you could sort of see underneath there. Okay, great. So, thank you, Mr. Greeley. We will switch over to Mr. Tramelli, if he has any comments you'd like to...
Oh, yeah, sure. Just to echo Mr. Greeley's comments, you know, Mr. Munt's done a good job explaining where we're at. We had a very productive meeting with Steph. We had broken down our memo into, you know, what we had thought would be conditions at various stages of either site plan approval or building permit, COs. And, and a lot of what you see in our memo are construction-related details that will be worked out, I'm sure, as the plan progresses prior to a building permit being issued. Our, our primary items for your consideration were related to the, the driveway, the sidewalk, which we've discussed already, and and some of the grading, which, you know, we'll continue to work with Mr. Munt on and make sure that it satisfies us as well as the fire chief. So I'm, I'm very comfortable with the plan where it is right now, and I think it's, you know, a matter of some minor adjustments at this point to, to get it to a final point for construction.
Great, thank you. When I discussed it with Margaret today, I said, there's a lot of stuff open, and she assured me that it's all being resolved and it's in good hands. So Margaret says that, I believe, her. And thank you for your putting it all together. So any other comments from us? If not, we're gonna go to the public. So...
Public here.
Mr. Chairman, I'm looking at the attendee list. If there's any members of the public that would like to address the Board on this application, please use the raise your hand feature, and I'll invite you to unmute yourself. Mr. Chairman, at this time, I don't see any members of the public who wish to address the Board on this application.
Sure. So then I will make a motion to close the public here on this application to 0-37 ICC Arch Care.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. So... Okay, we did it. I think, yeah, I'm good. I think it's a great addition. I think there was a lot of good work put together, and as I said at previous meetings, it's good for the community. So congratulations to the whole design team. Thank you for giving us something that was easy and important for us to approve. So that being said, there's no more comments. I will make a motion to approve this application to 0-37 ICC Arch Care 265 White Plains Road, subject to, I have two conditions, and I think we discussed them. And the first is that there'll be a final review of the site plan by civil, by the town civil and traffic engineering consultants, that would be you guys. And then prior to the issuance of the certificate of compliance, a landscape architect will provide a signed letter to building and planning, certifying that the landscape has been installed in accordance with the plans, and any changes will need to be approved and indicated in the letter. And then a, as-built landscape plan will be required by the building department. So, subject to those conditions...
And also just clarify that you are requiring the sidewalk as well.
Sidewalk, yeah.
Oh, yeah. And the sidewalk. Any other conditions that we went through? No, that's it. So, subject to those three conditions, as I said, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very, very nice.
Good work.
Yeah, it's very nice.
Good work, everyone.
Great job.
Thank you. Looking forward to seeing you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great job.
Great, great.
Thanks, thanks for leading the team, Father.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Margaret. Thank you, the whole team, the Planning Board, Architectural Review Board, Zoning Board, everyone. I think it'll be a beautiful mission to, for an underserved population that we have in our midst. And what a beautiful use of a convent that 100 years of sisters taught at ICC, and a few of them are still alive and absolutely love this idea. So thank you all, and Michael in particular. Thank you all.
Send them, send them out, thanks and our regards.
I will. A few of them may have taught a few of you.
And to, and to your staff and to Margaret, who, what a gem, so...
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys. Have a good evening.
Good luck, everybody.
Thank you.
So the next application, I hear birds, Louis.
That's Louis.
It's good to hear birds, right? It means winter's over. So then the next application is to 1-09 32 Scarsdale Avenue.
Hello?
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you, John.
Okay, John Caccunio here. I'm not bragging or complaining, but I'm, I'm coming to you live from a hospital bed in New York Presbyterian, unfortunately. But the Marys, though, should be allowed on too, because they're gonna be able to share the screen, since I only have my cell phone with me. Are the Marys there, Margaret?
Yes.
Hi, everybody. Good, good evening.
Sorry to hear your predicament, John, but I think it's...
Yeah, things, things happen, but I, I still struggle along, you know? I don't stop. Yeah, things, things happen, but I I still shrug along, you know, I don't stop. Like ever ready Energizer.
You haven't heard, sorry, go ahead.
This application is for a two-story addition on the left side of the house. It's directly over an existing patio, so there's zero net gain and impervious uh surfaces. So we went before the architectural review board. I think this is aesthetically pleasing with the house. With the gable roof we put on top and we made it blend in with the house. So I'm not sure what else I have to tell you guys.
I'm sorry, John, should I share my screen so you can look at the plan?
Yes, please.
Yeah, just pop that up. That'd be great.
Give me two seconds, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I see you coming.
Can you, can you see that now? Can you see drawings?
Yes, yes, we see.
Okay, so so I'm actually sharing them now. So Dennis?
Thank you. Yeah, I see, I see the cover. I can see the cover sheet.
Yeah, so let me uh hold on one second. Okay, so if you can see this, John, I can scroll down.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, please do.
Okay, so this shows where the addition is.
Right, it shows where the addition is. It also shows the section. And it shows the foundation plan. So like I said, it's on the left side of the house. It's for a family room off the existing kitchen on the first floor and expanded uh bedroom on the second floor.
So I'll show you the other area.
Yeah, so these are the exterior elevations. So from the front, I made a gable type roof perpendicular to the roof. That goes from front to back. Now, we also added a similar gable roof over the front entry door. And of course, the materials will match the existing. And like I said, it's over the patio which has retaining walls both at the front and the rear. The patio continues, so there'll still be a good piece of the patio left over after this addition. I think that's all I have to say at this time.
And the architectural review board did review this and they actually referred it to without any recommendations to make any modifications or changes.
Yes, correct.
Pretty simple and straightforward then.
Yes, it is.
Don't have any comments.
Yeah, no comments here.
Good. Okay, cool. That's uh, let's move forward then. So then let's open the uh public hearing. So I make a motion to open the public hearing on application two one zero nine thirty-two Scarsdale.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, if there are members of the public that wish to address the board on this application, please use the raise your hand feature.
Sort of breaking up there, Rob, but I think you're sort of saying there's no one out there, so. Unless I'm wrong, I'm gonna make a motion to close the public hearing on this application two one zero nine thirty-two Scarsdale Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Finish this up then. Looks good to us, John. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
I make a motion to approve application two one zero nine thirty-two Scarsdale Avenue.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And good luck and feel better, John.
Feel better, John.
Feel better.
We hope.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, stop by again.
Thank you, Margaret. Thank you for sharing the screen.
You're welcome.
Bye bye.
Thanks. The um next application is two one dash one zero, the Prince thirty-one Mill Road.
Let's see. Joe, can can you hear us?
I can hear you. I'm not sure why. Oh, I'm done. Okay.
There you go.
Okay, I uh, good evening, uh chairman, board members. I I first I'm I'm I want to just apologize, my techno guy in my office had to leave early today due to so I won't be able to share any plans and I I feel a little embarrassed about that because I see everybody else do that.
I I can, I can access them, yes.
Okay, alright, I I I again, I I just, I'm sorry for starting off that way, but so we have an application in front of you for a new restaurant uh right across from Town Hall. Uh, the old uh Nordic Edge, which was a personal service uh establishment. Now we're going to turn into a food establishment, uh primarily a takeout. And it's gonna be a uh kind of a healthy choice kind of thing with salad bowls, rice bowls, all various toppings that they can put on. We have designed a uh small uh line, a commercial uh kitchen line. And uh we've done several of these in town and we we kind of know what the board's expectations are. Along with um a small seating area in the front and new handicap accessible bathroom and again, commercial kitchen. It's basically a um a reuse of the existing store. It's gonna mimic uh Mason, which is right next door uh with the signage and the the window dressing uh kind of uh.
Oh. I I don't want to interrupt you, but maybe you could, I I'd like to kind of coordinate whatever I'm showing with what you're saying.
Okay, no, that's fine. It's fine. I mean.
So so here I can show you, here, here's um Mason sandwich and I guess this is the proposed spot right here, right?
On the streetscape, though, you can't see Mason sandwich. It's covered by a tree.
Tree, yeah.
It's uh but but Margaret, leave this one, leave the uh the overhead view because we could just talk about that very quickly with the board so that they understand. I mean, it's 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 so well set up already for the business because it has the the service and the employee parking in the back with the with the uh dumpsters in the back, deliveries through the back, nothing along the street. You have the pedestrian uh street traffic and or parking all throughout the neighborhood. So it's essentially gonna make no change except for fill the storefront with another food choice, which which I think is, you know, sorely needed, like I needed somewhere else to go eat. And um it it's um again, uh everything is uh mimicking what the restaurant next door Mason does, which is they utilize, you know, the rear and 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 for for their uh deliveries, etc. So it, I don't think that there's a going to be any kind of an issue for uh additional congestion or or deliveries or or issues that uh would have happened with a new startup in in a standalone kind of situation.
Sure. If I could ask, um you you've mentioned a couple of times, you've stated a couple of times that it mimics the next door uh Mason sandwich and and I saw that that same language in in some of the submissions as well. Um, i- i- is there any affiliation between uh the Prince and the ownership of the of of the Prince, the proposed eating establishment and that of the next door Mason sandwich?
Uh, yes, there is.
Okay, okay. So there i- is it, it would be kind of run by the same people or is it? Okay, alright. So this is an experienced uh uh an operation that's already experienced in running a food establishment at this uh approximate location.
Yes, and 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 it would be run very similar to exactly what they're doing. It's just a different food choice.
Okay, you're gonna share dumpsters, for example, or?
No, so they have, they 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 have a different, so they have these these uh bowls that they use that are um it's it's different, but they have the smaller dumpsters, the 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 rollaway ones that that we've shown on the back of the plan right outside the door. There's two of them there. And those will get picked up, you know, twice a week or so.
Okay. And deliveries are also in the back similar to whatever is being, or do they deliver through the front at Mason?
I don't believe they deliver through the front. They deliver through the back.
They do.
I think there's some deliveries in front because I see it when I come to work in the morning.
Yeah, we see the bread outside, right?
I don't think it creates a problem, but I do see boxes out front.
There's bread in the front in the morning, correct.
Right, that's good drop off and then in the back.
I think the owner is here as well, listening in. And my understanding is he's the owner of both Mason Sandwich and the new establishment, Mr. Greeley.
Will there be a prep kitchen in this new establishment or, you know, anvil system or any ventilation in the roof and?
Yes, sir. Yes, and that's all, that's all depicted on the drawings.
Uh, you want to flip to the drawings?
Sure.
Yeah, you can, yeah.
Alright, so stop for a second, Margaret. So so the 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 top of the right plan, you can see there's stairs that go down, there's a wall. And that's really the line. There's like a twelve foot line back there. And it's essentially like an oven and uh I think there's a one fryer there. All along the back here. And if you go to the next plan, Margaret? Uh, one more. Okay, the right plan is the roof. And and the 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 one at the top is the exhaust, but if you go to the next drawing, so the bottom detail, it shows you that exhaust and and then it's skewed upward and that would point towards Mill Road. So we wouldn't have any issues with the uh folks in the apartment building behind and everything would be going towards uh the street, so.
And that's internally mounted, all that's going through.
Well, yeah, correct, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
What's the, are they warming or are they cooking in the kitchen?
So they they may be cooking, they may be doing some chicken or something to put on top of your salad or, you know, stuff like that.
So there's a hood somewhere?
Yeah, there's a hood.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, that's a right kitchen. Yep, I see.
There's a kind of an elevation section there that shows the the line. There's like three pieces of equipment there and then the the hood.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not a big operation, but it's just, you know, they need something to be able to uh to manage.
So I guess the question is, do they have something similar in Mason?
They do. They have the exact same thing.
They have this exact same thing, okay.
Right, but they but they're they're busy with a different menu.
No, I understand. I'm just sort of thinking the, any uh noise being that comes out of the the hood is the same as what's next door.
Yeah, I don't.
Same level and.
Right, they don't, those things, I don't believe they make that much uh sound outside, right?
Don't think there's been any complaints, so.
No.
We'll stick with that. Okay.
Uh technically, um considering that both establishments would be owned by the same person, they could also coordinate deliveries.
Absolutely.
Is that right?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Okay. You can continue, Mr. Fernandez, unless you're.
So no, yeah, so e- essentially, we've just created a uh it's got a small sit-down area in the front for four people and.
Should we flip back to the ground?
Yeah, we can go back to the plan. One more, I think, one more. Okay, so. Uh, yes, that's fine. The the right side is the floor plan. And you have the the entrance on the left from the street. And you have the the front area which has two tables and four seats. Then there's a a line or a counter line where they can either um select certain foods that they want, their salads. There's also uh at the end of the line, there would be a um a register there and behind that would also be um a place where they would make smoothies. If you went around the counter, there's like a four-foot area that's open and that would lead you to the uh the bathroom area. Behind the counter, they have some prep tables which are up against a a pre-made uh refrigeration box which kind of separates the front from the kitchen area. And then that's kind of open. There's uh some stainless steel tables for them to make you know salads and stuff and there's a wash area on the right for for prepping uh their bowls and stuff like that. And then they have on the left corner two round circles and those are like their rice cookers a little lower down.
Yeah, okay.
And 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 then the rest are prep tables, you know, just for them to make these these bowls with um, you know, various either salads or rice bowls and I understand it's the latest thing. I I I'm not caught up with the times yet, but um I'm sure I will be soon.
You're making me hungry.
Yeah.
Some new place to have lunch, Margaret.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
It's gonna be good. It's gonna be a good one. You know, it's 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 just the right size, I think, for for this this type of a business and and we've kind of really utilized you know every inch uh to make it work for them. And and I think it's, I I think it'd be a great uh addition to the neighborhood, another food choice.
Yeah, I do too. Is there a front elevation?
There is, um, I think if you go well, that's what it looks like.
Cool, right.
Yeah.
There you go.
I mean, that's.
Did you have a proposed elevation as well?
I I don't think we we did anything
I don't think.
Formally. I think we're we're just planning on um uh using some white letters like they use next door and to put like the wording, the prints. And uh and then the sign, I was waiting for the guy, uh the sign guy to to send me something and he he never got it to me in time for the submission, but so we just wrote the name, but it's not gonna look that crude. It'll be something nice looking.
It's gonna take the same form as the one on uh next door?
Sim- well, see, you can see Mason's sign.
Yeah.
It's kind of like an uh white, white outline, black.
Right.
I mean, I think it's gonna be similar, but I don't think it's gonna be the same.
Okay. Uh, so nothing else is being done to the store?
No, nothing's gonna change. I mean, the the outside, the the brick looks like it's in good order. The green canopy looks nice, you know, it has the hanging signs. That's gonna stay. Um, so, yeah.
Good.
So and and Joe, you you know, the signs do require review and approval by the town sign committee, so those you'll come back for sign approval.
Yes, yes. The the sign, uh, I believe the sign person is um the guy on on uh oh boy, Soul Mill River Road. He's uh Mike, the sign guy. He's S. Sand Signs, I think it is. He knows.
Okay, sure, yeah, he knows.
Just, I'm having a mental block, so.
No, no, don't worry. We don't need to know him. Uh, okay, I don't have any questions. Looks looks like a nice addition. I know Mason's doing very well and it's become a destination for a lot of people. Every time I'm getting my shirts next door, there's more people going into Mason than are getting shirts. So, which is good, right? I'm sure this will do just as well. I'm sure this will do just as well. Any more comments, team?
No comments.
Board team? So that's good. So let's just see if there's any comments from the public. So I make a motion to open the public hearing on application two one, one zero, Thirty-One Mill Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I will see if anyone wants to address the board. If any of the attendees at the meeting wish to address the board or members of the public, please use the hand, raise your hand feature and I'll invite you to. Mr. Chairman, at this time, I do not see any members of the public who wish to address the board on this application.
Thank you. So then I make a motion to close the public here on application two one one zero, Thirty-One Mill Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, Mr. Fernandez, you said the owner of Mason is attending?
He was invited. I, I sent him the invite.
No, I don't see him on the, yeah, he's not here.
Mr. Brenly?
Just going to give an opportunity to advocate for his.
Yeah, he's here. George, do you have any, anything you'd like to add?
No, Joe did a pretty good job of, of giving a good explanation. So I thank him for that. But I am open to any questions that you guys may have.
I'd like to see the menu, but I guess I'll have to stop and.
Yeah, I, I think, I think one concern that we have had with food establishments that have some form of cooking component, a kitchen component to it is, is, you know, what's being done with the exhaust? And I think to a lesser extent, noise issues, more the, the aromas of cooking and, you know, if there are any grease, any grease that's involved that tends to have a, I guess, a stronger aroma to it. But it, it seems like this is going to be a lower impact kitchen. Is, is that a fair, at, at, at least compared to Mason, for example, next door? Is that a fair characterization?
So although there is a fryer listed as a part of the equipment, I would tell you that frying would be the least impactful of items on, on our menu. This is, this, the reason why this concept was developed is to be more somewhat of a more healthy nutritious option to Mason. So although I can understand the question and the concern, that, that really is not going to be the case with this, with The Prince.
Okay, right. And, and quite frankly, if there, if it were a problem with, with Mason, I would expect that we would be hearing from members of the public complaining about adding a, a, a second cooking, a, a second establishment that has a kitchen involved in it. And there was no one from the public voicing any such complaint.
Did we talk about hours of operation? I mean, I imagine they're the same as.
I think I saw that it's, it's meant to be the same as Mason, eleven to eight during the weekdays and eleven to nine on the weekends. Is that right?
Correct.
Yeah.
It's pretty harmless. Okay, I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Brenly. So then unless there's nothing else, that's I make a motion to approve this application two one one zero, The Prince. Oh, hold on a second. What's the significance of The Prince? I have to know. It's sort of.
So, you know, we've, 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 we've received a lot of great feedback from, from the community and oftentimes words, Mason is the king, has, has come up. We love, we love.
Oh, really?
That you guys are the king. So with, with every, with every monarchy, I guess there's a, a prince that's, that's needed. So if Mason is the so-called king, then we have the prince.
Okay, okay. I saw the grade.
I thought James Banana was the king.
The king. I'm just the chairman of the board. All right, thank you. I just had to get that out. All right, thank you. Let's go back to the approval. Sorry, I'm wasting time, but I make a motion to approve application two one one zero with no hesitation, The Prince Thirty-One Mill Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So then the only note is that the signage is obviously going to be reviewed and approved by the town sign committee. Great. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Great. Have a nice evening and then we're done. So I make a motion to close the Town of Eastchester Planning Board meeting of March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Great.
Good night.
Have a nice evening.
Nice weekend.
Thanks.
Take care.